Call to order tonight's meeting of the ISD 191 Burnsville Eagan Savage School Board. The date is June 11th, 2020 and the time is 6:30 PM. Like to start by welcoming our audience. This is the week where summer fun starts for our students and the work of summer continues for our staff. So thank you for joining us. Director Chester, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start by approving tonight's agenda. I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Director Schatz, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Eric Miller.
Aye.
Abigail Alt.
Aye.
Jen Hallwigger.
Aye.
Leslie Chester.
Aye.
Darcy Schatz.
Aye.
Dee Dee Courier.
Aye.
Scott Hume.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. We're opening tonight's information portion of our meeting with Foundation 191 grant recipients. I'd like to welcome Robbie Benel, Foundation 191 President. Welcome Robbie.
Good evening. Thank you Cheryl and Superintendent Battle and Board Directors. Thanks for inviting me here tonight. I will be brief. I know that you guys have a lot to get to. So I am Robbie Benel, President of Foundation 191, which is the Education Foundation for the school district. I'm here tonight on behalf of the foundation to announce the 2020-2021 Foundation 191 Grant Award Recipients. I will say that each year the foundation receives many grant requests from district staff for projects and activities that are intended to support curriculum, promote the physical and emotional well-being of our students, and to facilitate community outreach. Each year, we're just blown away by the creative thinking and the compassion of our teachers and staff. It's really an honor to be a part of this program. Last year, we received 26 grant requests and we fully or partially funded 18 of them totaling $11,217. Over 5,000 students and their families were impacted. This year was different. We got two grant requests. We believe that with the pandemic, with the school closures, the distant teaching and learning, the uncertainty of how long and how difficult this crisis would be, teachers had their hands full and just were not thinking about next year. We really hope to be back on track next spring and be able to do some fundraising and do get back on track with the grants. So with that, I will announce the two grants. They were awarded $500 each and they are in effect for the 2020-2021 school year. The first grant recipient is from Sky Oaks. We have funded this group in the past and we're excited to see them back. It's the Sky Flyers. That is the Sky Oaks Fourth and Fifth Grade Leadership Team, students who work to make a positive impact on their peers. The second was from Burnsville High School, Bowls for Brain Power. As you know, Bowls for Brain Power is the annual community fundraiser intended to help insecure food families. Proceeds are used to buy the food for the children and they are distributed through the Brain Power in a Backpack program which serves over 600 kids a week. So we're very happy to be a part of that as well. So I say congratulations to both of the schools. We look forward to working with them over the year. We really encourage staff, parents, and students to send us photos, tag Foundation 191 on your social media, just anyway, you know, to help us get the word out. I will add, my final thought is the board, the foundation board did discuss what next fall might look like when we reopen the schools and there are potential unexpected financial needs in the classroom. And, you know, depending on the circumstances, we were really committed and everybody agreed that we want to potentially offer some grant opportunities in the fall. If there are some needs that need to be filled, that would, you know, this would be outside of our regular spring timeline, but we feel strongly that if it's inside of our mission, we really want to try to do something. So I just say congratulations. Thanks for having me here tonight. And I really appreciate, on behalf of the board, your continued support of Foundation 191. Do you have any questions?
Thank you Robbie. I was having a hard time with my microphone. Always good to see you and always great to receive this report. Board members, any comments or questions? Thank you so much and-
Okay, I'm sorry. I was trying to unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say thank you Robbie and the rest of the Foundation 191 Board. I've been the Board Representative for a little over a year now and you guys are doing some really, really good work and it's a shame that because of the pandemic, you weren't able to maximize all the good work that was done this year, but I know you'll bounce back better than ever next year, I suspect. So I think it's great that you're wanting to be able to provide some support to teachers in the fall if they need it. And I think next year, bigger and better things are in store for the foundation. So thank you for all you and the rest of the group continues to do.
Thank you and thanks for being the liaison between the school board and our foundation board. We appreciate, and Darcy, I know you've been a liaison, Abigail, you've been a liaison. We really, and Dee Dee, we really appreciate everything that you guys have done over the years to support the foundation. So thank you again.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you for your resiliency and for being flexible next fall. Great to hear that and we'll look forward to hearing more. Thanks so much Robbie.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. All right, next, we are turning to Director Miller. We will receive a report on the superintendent's evaluation. This is the vice chair's responsibility per policy. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Alt. I have a prepared statement. I'm just going to read quickly. On May 28th, 2020, the ISD 191 School Board and Superintendent Dr. Teresa Battle met in a closed session for her annual review. The review consisted of two parts, personal district-specific goals for Superintendent Battle and an assessment of 25 of the many elements outlined in the Minnesota School Boards Association Superintendent Standards. There were seven personal goals for Superintendent Battle. The board rated her work as meeting or exceeding expectations for all seven goals. In particular, the board found Dr. Battle's work to strengthen school-community relationships as a visible leader for the district, her work to align resources towards our strategic direction, and her work to increase her knowledge of MDE Financial Reporting Requirements as exceeding her expectations. During the 2019-2020 school year, her first year with our district, Superintendent Battle successfully led the district through challenges that superintendents might more typically face over the course of a decade. The board knows that her calm leadership, values-driven decision-making, and commitment to community engagement were essential for that success. A more complete summary of the evaluation will be available as part of the meeting documents. Thank you, board members, for your work in completing this evaluation and thank you, Dr. Battle, for your leadership this year. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Miller. Board members' comments? I would like to take the opportunity to, first off, thank Dr. Battle again for a year like no other. And Director Miller pulling together the, you know, the thoughts and the feedback from all seven of us and pulling it into, synthesizing it into a final document for us to review together is quite an undertaking and you just, you really did a great job and I wanted to thank you for your diligence in making sure that the process was as smooth as it was. So thank you. Next, we will turn to Dr. Battle. We will be receiving and members of her staff and leadership team, we will be receiving a report on the 191 COVID-19 journey. Dr. Battle.
Thank you Chair Alt and Directors of the Board. We will begin our COVID-19, the 191 COVID-19 journey. We'll go directly to an overview slide. This slide provides an overview of our presentation tonight. We will provide statistics from our work, provide insight into departmental work and share next steps about summer session and moving forward to fall. We will share data that illustrate what we did in response to COVID-19, but more importantly, we will share the story behind the numbers. We will share our approach to the pandemic, what we learned, what we did well, and what we know we need to focus on to do better for our students, staff, and community. I want to first start out saying that the only way to get over this time of uncertainty, rapid change, and now recent tragic events with the killing of George Floyd is to go through it. In 191, we decided we were going to get through the pandemic by mobilizing our resources of people, time, and money and partners. Staff did the job they were hired to do. They utilize their talents and expertise and we declare that we are in this together. So with the next slide, on March 13th, a Friday, we heard from state officials that they were not planning on closing schools and less than two days later, Governor Walz issued an executive order stipulating that on Wednesday, March 18th, schools would be closed with the intention that instruction would resume by Monday, March 30th. And we all now know that the school closure continued to the end of the school year. Governor Walz challenged us to have all hands on deck and within a couple of hours that Sunday, we had a plan to respond to that challenge. That afternoon, district leaders were reimagining our entire school system. We had to deliver learning, meals, and childcare safely and effectively and do it all from a distance. Members of the executive leadership team, departmental leaders, and I began planning and we met from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Also during this time, I consulted with civic officials from the cities of Burnsville and Savage and also 191 Board Chair Alt and Vice Chair Miller were there to support and assist with planning. Looking at the health and wellness of our staff and students while also recognizing the hardship these changes would cause many of our families, I did decide to cancel school beginning Monday, March 16th. From that day, we began to lead and operate a district mostly remotely. We identified essential tasks related to the governor's mandate and Minnesota Department of Education guidance, the Board of Education work that needed to continue, human resource and finance that we had to complete. And from there, staff determined the associated tasks that could be done remotely and those that required work from the offices. So I have to tell you, our partnerships and collaboration continued with the city, the Burnsville Chamber, Second Harvest Heartland, Oakley Door, many countless volunteers. We stayed in touch with our participants in our senior center, which is a partnership between 191 and the city. We even had Burnsville High School student who helped make masks. I do want to note that last meeting, we heard from the principals about their school plans amidst boundary changes. Tonight, you'll hear from departments under Brian Gerstich's leadership, who played a critical role in our response. Please look forward to an August reopening school report. We will hear from our instructional staff, including principals and teachers about the plan for reopening school based on the lessons we learned this spring. Now let's move on to the data. Let's look at some numbers. So I won't read all of the statistics, but I will point out that by Tuesday, March 15th, to launch distance learning, we had distributed more than 3,000 individual devices to students along with other learning materials. By Wednesday, our Food and Nutrition Services started providing free meals for children, an effort that would grow and eventually distribute more than $300,000 meals at more than 30 locations. And also that same Wednesday, we started providing childcare for healthcare and emergency service workers in a way that protected each child's health as well as the health of our employees. In that first week, our instructional leaders planned and delivered more than 50 hours of professional development so that our teachers and other staff would be prepared to serve our students to this new reality of distance learning. And our teachers took on the challenge with gusto, spending countless hours planning and learning, collaborating with colleagues, and making personal connections with students and families. Our communication department supported all departments during this time. A few examples targeted messages to students and family, staff, and community partners. They also helped compile survey results from our students and families about their experience. So lastly, before we move on to the next slide, I cannot say enough about how impressed I am with the amazing staff in 191. You have responded to the challenge before us. And so now we begin with the story behind the numbers. First, with our superheroes, our health service staff, and then each staff member will progress through their presentation slides and introduce themselves. I'll turn it over now to Bernie Bean.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. My name is Bernie Bean and I am the Lead Licensed School Nurse for District 191. We are a team of 22. A licensed school nurse is a baccalaureate-prepared registered nurse with a certification in public health nursing. We are the public health experts in schools, ensuring the health and safety for students, families, and the community. Next slide. As a health service team, our charge was to envision and develop a virtual model for the day-to-day activities of a health office. Our vision, distance caring for distance learning, continues to support education with an emphasis on the four components of school nursing practice, community, public health, care coordination, leadership, and quality improvement. Our journey started before distance learning, when advised of a potential exposure for students traveling in Greece over spring break. Our public health expertise was needed for the planning and the actions implemented for this situation. It was determined that no exposure occurred. Communication was initiated with families before the plane landed in Minnesota. This initial communication laid the framework for communication of time-sensitive and factual information. Next slide. Communicable disease prevention is core to public health principles. The skill set allowed for the development of procedures following the guidance from MDH, supporting safety and best practices. Nursing services provided education and just-in-time training for staff working in food services and childcare. Procedures for these programs continue to be reviewed and modified to ensure the public health principles are embedded in activities. In order to develop these procedures, health services needed to be on the front line. Enrollments for the door delivery program were reviewed by a nurse and families were provided with additional information. Nurses were active behind the scene in childcare, which include health planning for students, medication management. Childcare families affected by COVID were provided distance caring through phone calls to support and provide resources. During the summer, health and safety consultation continues with the childcare sites. This collaboration allows for improvement in procedures such as illness screening, cleaning, and social distancing for compliance with the rapidly changing guidelines from MDH. Change is continual. District procedures are reviewed and updated according to new information about the coronavirus. Weekly conference calls from MDH in partnership with our local public health agencies provide guidance for the implementation of best practices in order to flatten the curve. Distance caring and being on the front lines provided the foundation for the development of safe procedures adhering to the public health principles during this pandemic. Over the past 10 weeks, additional guidance and procedures have been created and modified for our new normal. A few of these activities included Operation Chromebook Drop Off, Farewell Parades, and Graduations. Mr. Rogers summarized the COVID journey for many. There is no normal life that is free of pain. It is that very wrestling with our problems that can be the impetus for our growth. Moving forward, health and safety will be the anchor for summer programming and planning for returning to school in the fall. Health Service Team would like to thank ISD 191 Community for the collaboration and support during this time of distance caring. We will continue to be Burnsville Strong, promoting health and safety. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd just like to say that Bernie has provided some amazing leadership for our community. Her expertise and team kept us healthy and well throughout the last few months and I so appreciate her leadership and work. This information on this slide helps to round out the picture for our student support team. And our student support team, in all the various ways, always prioritized relationship first and helped us to look at every individual situation from multiple perspectives in a multidisciplinary approach. As well, the slide shows some of our great community partners that includes Headway, Park Nicholas Foundation, and Isserun.
My name is Dave Lake. I'm Director of Operations and Transportation for 191. Two years ago, we purchased electrostatic sprayers for each building to combat the spread of germs during cold and flu season. This spring, we had the essential equipment on hand to immediately begin disinfecting our buildings when COVID-19 became a concern. ISD 191 moved to provide daycare for children of essential workers. Daily disinfecting of all high-use areas and surfaces, including playgrounds, was necessary to protect the health of our community. Social distancing, hand washing, gloves and masks quickly became a reality to ensure safety. Monitoring, adapting, COVID-19 updates has become a way of life. Governor Walz, the CDC, and the MDH are essential to how we adapt on a daily basis to health guidelines. The number one priority for operations and custodial is the health and safety of all staff, students, and visitors to our buildings and properties. This has not changed and remains our priority. The school year has ended and we look to summer and fall with the same goals in mind. Our department is ever mindful of our rapidly changing environment and we are prepared to tackle its challenges. I want to personally thank our building leads, maintenance staff, grounds personnel, and our custodial staff for their commitment and dedication as well as their response to COVID-19.
Hello, I'm Amina Oftedal. I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for the District. One of the main charges for us was providing distance learning for all students. So technology did a device distribution. And on the 17th, on the 18th, I met with all teacher groups and laid out expectations. March 19th and 20th, we did team collaboration and professional development. We had spring break, which gave folks time to reflect and prepare. March 30th, we continued with professional development and delivered flex learning days and on April 6th until the end of the school year, we embarked on extended distance learning. Slide. Meeting with teachers, we met virtually with all teacher groups. It was important for us to make sure that we provided clear definitions and expectations, the difference between flex learning and distance learning, and also setting out those priorities for our work with students. We really wanted to make sure that establishing relationships and connections with students was the most important and then providing instruction aligned to the academic standards. Those were our beginnings and we began to build and layer each of the next priorities as we continued on with our learning. The other piece was professional development and support, making sure that all of our teachers had access to supported technology and that they were able to develop their skills and grow in how they were going to deliver distance learning to all of the students. Finally, I made sure to emphasize the point that this was new to all of us and we needed to provide grace for ourselves and for others, not letting perfection get in the way of getting the job done. Slide. On those team collaboration and professional development days, we spent time building our district-wide teams, bringing together all grade-level teachers and having them do collaborative planning. All members of a certain content area to do that collaboration. We set aside Wednesdays as that collaboration and professional development day each week. The professional development was tremendous. Teachers stepped forward, teacher leaders, to deliver that professional development, especially our digital learning specialists and our teachers who were graduates of the Blended Learning Program. We made sure that the professional development was differentiated, personalized. We did live and on-demand recorded professional development so that teachers could access whatever it is that they needed. We made sure that our curriculum priorities were very clear and reasonable in what we expected students to be able to do in this delivery and we worked on a common lesson design coming out of the great work of our blended learning teams. Finally, we provided support for our teachers. We did weekly surveys to answer questions, to assess their needs in areas of concern. Slide. Some of the challenges that we found with distance learning was really how do we have that organized connections with our students, families, and staff and making sure that all the communication from MDE was the most up-to-date? One of the struggles was is that the information changed from week to week and we all needed to adapt and adjust to make sure that we were complying with the requirements. We also really were challenged with the amount of time that we wanted to make sure was reasonable for students and families to spend on distance learning, what types of activities would work well for a distance learning format, and including those curriculum priorities, making sure that our students were making progress. We looked at instruction, the usual instructional strategies. We wanted to take the best from face-to-face instruction and the best from online learning instruction and combine those together. Many teachers learned many new adaptations to how they were looking at student work, how they were grading, how they were connecting with students, how they were setting deadlines for students, and different strategies to encourage learning, from videotaping demonstrative lessons, meeting with students one-on-one, and to provide recordings of encouragement and support. We also looked at engagement and adjusted our expectations for what engagement means and were able to clarify that. We also were able to really look at what were the self-care that teachers needed to do and address the mental health needs of our students as Stephanie White also shared with us. Slide. One of the things that came very clear is that inequities were very prominent. The CPSS and equity training began to come forward with our staff as they were more than aware of the barriers that were there and they found themselves experiencing tremendous discomfort and not willing to accept those inequities and began to adjust their expectations in order to make sure students were all connected, that students all had access, that students were being supported in a variety of different ways, that we were able to look at those disparities in resources and make sure that students clearly had the things that they might need individually. We also looked at how do we assess and grade, making adjustments in our grading practices and the options for students. Slide. The next couple of slides really look at what our students and our staff said were really impactful for them. And I have the survey data that we took with our K-5 students. Overwhelmingly from students, it was missing out on school and the social connections with their friends and their teachers. There were many struggles- There were many struggles with technology. However, that on the opposite side, they absolutely loved the Zoom and video interactions. Any interaction they could have with their teacher was set really set apart. We did ask our elementary students how to improve distance learning, and our kindergarten students had some very clear ideas. And I would highly recommend that we consider them. One was to have more strawberry ice cream, and I think that would improve our distance learning all the way around, and also to draw little hearts and head pictures. And I think those are some things we really need to take and incorporate into our practice. Slide. Our secondary students also were really honest and straightforward. They appreciated the organization and the delivery through Schoology. They did express concern about how do they get that close connection when they were had questions or were confused about directions or about the work itself? And many of them were overwhelmed. They missed desperately their friends and teachers, but they also listed that as one of the things that made it better is being able to connect to their friends. Slide. And staff actually reported some of the same things, that isolation and that connection with their students face-to-face and their colleagues. And while they felt as though they were supported by the district and more than anything appreciated the dedicated time for learning, they really struggled through some different pieces, and one of them was really making sure that they understood how to engage students. With all of these pieces, we move on to really looking at how many of those disparities were supported and distance learning was supported through technology.
Good evening. I am Rachel Garten. I'm the Instructional Technology Coordinator here in ISD 191. 12 weeks ago, our entire technology system was designed for in-school learning. Within these short weeks, we have transformed the system in monumental ways. I'd like to focus on four areas that have been crucial elements in our response to distance learning and district-wide remote work. There are also three key themes that are interwoven into our story. Those are values, community, and preparation. As I share these stories, I don't claim everything went smoothly. I do know that our clearly identified values have been our guide. Our teachers and our staff have rallied to do extraordinary work, and we've had years of preparation that we were able to tap into during this unprecedented time. By the week of of March 9th, across the nation's schools were starting to close. Minnesota schools remained optimistically open, yet patterns were beginning to emerge, and the possibility of a seismic shift was becoming real. As distance learning became a reality, we knew that existing barriers would become larger for some students, and new barriers would arise for many. As a culturally responsive responsive system, a goal to use our district's resources to remove as many of those barriers as quickly as possible was in effect. The first major example of this was the handout of our K-5 student devices. On that Sunday night, I left our planning meeting realizing the enormity of the task at hand. Over 3,500 devices needed to be gathered and organized. All of these Chromebooks were in carts and cabinets with charging cords neatly wired and locked. Many of the needed devices were at our middle schools and Burnsville High School. The timeline was rapid, and the information was changing very fast. Digital learning specialists, continuous improvement coaches, media EAs, principals, the technology team, and many others joined forces. And by 9:20 PM that night, I knew that we could do it. By the next day, the technology team began tackling our ever-expanding and urgent priority list to ensure that staff had the resources and access required to safely and securely work from home. We also began the mission to ensure that all of our students had at-home internet access. We immediately added hotspots, and by Week 3, we were meeting with social workers and cultural liaisons regularly to ensure we were responding as quickly as possible to family internet needs. At that time, hundreds of thousands of hotspots were being ordered across the country, and supplies were very tight. So we worked with Comcast to set up a sponsorship program for our families to help cover needs. Stephanie White, Isis Buchanan, and many social workers called the management at specific housing complexes and hotels to find and create new solutions. We know that distance learning disproportionately impacted some of our students, and so many of our staff in our district have been their fierce advocates through this. With the majority of teachers and staff working remotely, our students using our devices and resources from home, it was very clear to us that our technology support needed to do a very quick redesign. We immediately set up a dedicated student and family support line and implemented a new ticketing system that could handle the remote and varied support needs. We worked with teachers, principals, and cultural liaisons to listen to the questions our families had and created a multilingual knowledge base of the most commonly asked questions. We set up internal processes for handling new support needs, a new Chromebook swap process to ensure students were not waiting on repairs, and began handling questions about how to use instructional resources that had never come to the tech department before. When I asked the tech team to share what they were most proud of, Pam Ruthley Komolka shared that she is now on a first-name basis with a grandparent who works so diligently to understand how to use a Chromebook so she could help her grandson. These stories of personal connection have been plentiful as we have added thousands of parents and family support, family members to our support network. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the time and effort that the entire tech team put into making sure that our technology ecosystem was fully functioning and supportive. They have worked long hours with rapidly changing information requirements and a constant flood of new issues to tackle. As soon as one problem was solved, dozens more were in line, most of them simultaneously top priority. Earlier, Amina shared details about distance learning. We were fortunate in that we had a solid list of programs, things like our single sign-on, Schoology, CSO, and those were fully implemented. These key programs and the critical mass of teachers who regularly used and knew the programs allowed us to move quickly. Our priority list included managing the flood of free offerings and balancing student data privacy and security with these opportunities and providing access and training to specific programs for hundreds of co-teachers, EAs, clerical, and others. There were also needs that we did not have in place. One of those was a video conferencing tool. We anticipated that having a synchronous option would be a lifeline to connect students, families, and staff. Streamlining the normal integration process, we quickly analyzed our options. We did a risk assessment. We chose the platform, and we worked to mitigate mitigate the risks as quickly as possible. Our recent student and staff feedback confirmed how important video conferencing was to connect and learn this spring. I want to take this opportunity to share a huge appreciation to Katie Samola and the whole DLS team, the Digital Learning Specialist Team, for the countless hours of professional development, professional training and development and support they provided teachers. Their expertise and adjusted role was absolutely critical for our early childhood and elementary students. I also want to send a shout-out to the Technology Advancement Team or the TAT Team, which began meeting in February as part of our Advanced Blended Learning Cohort. Little did we know what was coming when we first met in late February. Our media specialists and the TAT Team worked closely with CSO and technology to provide crucial expertise and guidance for our secondary teachers and staff. Our clearly defined equity-driven values made our goals and steps clear in the midst of chaos. Our community rallied to know and respond to the needs of our students, families, teachers, and staff. And our years of preparation regarding devices and technology resources, professional development and training, and our cultural proficiency was paramount in our ability to make this shift so successful. While we certainly had stumbles, we have much to be proud of and a solid foundation as we move through the summer and into next fall. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Julie Kronavetter, Director of Food Nutrition Services. School food service workers redeemed essential to feed children. Coming up with a plan in just a few days to completely change our entire food preparation and meal service delivery method was a challenge. Plans change by the minute in both labor and logistics. On Day 1, March 18th, we distributed curbside grab-and-go meals at two middle schools and transported meals to children at two childcare sites, serving just 411 meals. By Day 2, we partnered with Schmitty &amp; Sons Bus Company to deliver meals to three large housing complexes. Food is a basic need, so we continued serving during spring break. By providing a cold breakfast meal and hot entree with lunch, our counts began to increase quickly. On Day 8, we began distributing meals for all seven days of the week. By mid-April, some Minnesota districts had begun laying off food service workers. We, however, had already picked up the pace. In addition to breakfast and lunch, we decided to apply for and provide snacks under the Child and Adult Care Food Program. We continued to research the largest areas of need in our community and eventually distributed meals at three middle schools, three district childcare sites, 31 housing complexes, and three home-delivered bus routes for medically fragile children and those without transportation. At the end of the school year, we had served incredible amounts of free meals and snacks to children of our community. In addition to the outstanding work of other departments, I'm so grateful for all the amazing Food Nutrition Services team members who answered the call to duty, bus drivers, operations and ground staff, health services employees, drivers, educational assistants, and volunteers who assisted with meal distribution. We all did our individual parts, and together we are 191. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Conapah. I am the Coordinator for the Before and After School Childcare Program for Project Kids. And Project Kids and Ready to Grow, Ready to Learn basically put together the emergency childcare that was provided for the emergency workers in a couple of days. We began providing the care on March 18th and went through Thursday, June 4th. Care was provided at three locations. We had infants through five-year-olds over at Diamond Head Education Center, and MW Savage and Gideon Pond offered care for our kindergarten through fifth graders. We had approximately 75 kids that attended each day among the three sites, and about 220 kids were enrolled totally. While programming was implemented, and everyone's kind of touched on this already, all of the guidelines set forth by the CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health were closely followed. And like everyone else has also said, everything seems to change day by day. Most importantly was we had a very successful implementation of the district's distance learning, all because of a collaborative effort maybe between Project Kids staff, parents, and some of the ISD 191 colleagues. A family actually from MW Savage Childcare had sent an email thank you out to the staff, and they said that they felt their children did extremely well, way better than they thought they ever would do, engaging in the distance learning, and they felt it was a large part of it was due because of the direction and guidance from our Project Kids staff. So that made everyone feel really good. Some of our biggest or one of our biggest challenges was the final four days of emergency care that last week of official school. What we were offering within the two elementaries, we had to restructure and reorganize because we needed to also make sure that teachers had access to the classrooms that we were using. They needed to come back into their rooms, and we wanted to make sure that along with the children we were taking care of, our staff and the teachers, everybody was safe. Also, at that same time, that same week, the Project Kids staff were planning for our summer break program, and it's a totally different program unlike any that we've ever offered before in the past. It's a fee-based program, and right now, we are housing at Sutrail and MW Savage for the kindergarten through sixth graders and then over at Diamond Head for our younger ones. The programming began yesterday at the elementary schools, and it'll go through August 28th, and so far, so good. We were also something we're kind of excited about because our staff really are behind this. We're going to partner with the families and other district staff in providing our participants with the district's summer distance learning. So everybody is really looking forward to that. And again, we are working closely with the ISD 191 Health Service Staff. We couldn't have done half of what we have been doing without them. The CDC, the Minnesota Department of Health, and Minnesota Fair Education Association, all of it. Just making sure that we are meeting all of the changing guidelines. It's my opinion that no doubt we are going to provide childcare this summer. It's going to be fun. It's going to be safe, and it's going to be positively memorable for every child that participates. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tom Umhofer, Community Education Director. You can click on the link in the What's Happening in Community Education slide right now to get more details of some of the programs that we're offering, the numbers behind the scenes. We're moving a lot more towards online classes like ArtBots and Coding and Drama Lab and Chess, and we're doing ready-for-kindergarten online sessions. And we've discovered there are so many other opportunities out there, we didn't even realize that we don't know yet. Also, Rockin' Reader started today, and Essay was our first reader. If you want to record a story, we will make sure that we put you on our website as a Rockin' Reader. You can see part of the monthly newsletter on your screen right now that we send out to all families via School Messenger. Everything on the right-hand side is a live link to classes and partners. It's chock-full of information. I want to give a strong thank yous to Pam Voight and Kerry Nerman for supporting Brainpower Backpack and our Pantry 191s at all five sites. And many thanks to Janine Christensen, Martha Dudley, Char Lattery, Stacy Conapah, Lindsay Griffin, and their teams for everything they've done for childcare. Being on the front line every day from the beginning and working with the very people who contact those with COVID has been challenging and extremely stressful, and they are the heroes of my crisis. And I am so proud to be a part of their team, my community education team, and the great team of 191. Thank you.
And I have the next slide. Stacy Sofin, the Executive Director of Human Resources, is unable to be with us tonight. So this slide illustrates the support the Human Resource Department staff have provided in our virtual district in response to COVID-19. As you know, we are in the people business. People provide the talent and expertise to fulfill our mission and educate children, support their families, and work in partnership with our community. You can see the many different ways that the Human Resource Staff supported all employees. I do want to highlight the leaders of our 12 bargaining units. As expected, employees had many questions, and so working in collaboration with Stacy Sofin, his staff, and also with me, Stacy and I hosted a virtual meeting to gather all of them together so I could share my appreciation to them in the field, any questions that they may have. So to the Human Resource Team, Stacy, Joy, Tiffany, Jessica, and Jared, I thank you so much for your work. And we will go to the next step slide, and I believe it's operations.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. We continue to monitor and assess each of the areas that you see on the slide before you and the financial impact that COVID is having on ISD 191. We will apply for the CARES Act funding, which is now available in Minnesota. As of today, allocations have been received, processes have been defined, and we are beginning our planning for that application.
I need to take a moment and say a very special thank you to a team of people, many of whom you've heard from tonight, who all have been creative, dedicated, hardworking, caring, and particularly in the past four months, have done an absolute phenomenal job with their teams in serving our families, staff, and community very well. Julie Kronavetter, Director of Food and Nutrition Services. Tom Umhofer, Director of Community Education. Rachel Garten, Coordinator of Instructional Technology, leading the Technology Department during this time. Robin Pickle, Director of Finance. Glenn Simon, recently retired Director of Operations and Transportation. Dave Lake, Director of Operations and Transportation. To them and all of their team members, my heartfelt thanks.
Hello, and I'm Aaron Tinklberg, Director of Communications for the District. And it's always our goal to be accurate and timely and clear in our messaging out to families and to staff. And it was never more important than during the last few months. You can see on the screen just some of the stats in terms of the messages that we sent out. There were days early on when we were sending out messages more than once a day as information changed, and several people have mentioned that along the way. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if people are hearing me right now.
We hear you.
Okay, see, so you are hearing me. Okay, that's good. I'm sorry about that. The do, I just want to highlight also, we built pretty much an entire section of the website. Thank you to Lisa Lake and Wes Dray for having that happen. And then along with BCTV staff and Jeff Andrews and a couple of other staff members, Teresa Musser at the high school, we did produce four virtual graduation ceremonies and several recognitions over the last couple of weeks as well. So a different kind of setup, but the same sort of emphasis as always from the Communications Department.
I have the next slide. And so we would like to discuss for a couple of minutes, next steps. It's summer, and so many of us during this time, we had trouble keeping track of the days of the week. And it is summer, so summer session. So summer session, Minnesota Department of Education gave us two options, distance learning or to pilot a hybrid model, distance learning with some face-to-face. We decided to go with distance learning because transportation costs were prohibitive. So at the time of the guidance, we would have to have nine or less students on the bus, and that would be $10,000 a bus per day to serve 250 students. So our summer session is targeted services July 6th through 30th, Monday through Thursday, for grades one through eight. They will have sixty minutes in the morning and sixty minutes in the afternoon. We have worked with the University of Minnesota and other partners for summer program kits, also for eighth-grade summer STEM program components. They will have a STEM Projects course with the STEM kits, ninth-grade success course, service learning project, and multimedia communications project. The ninth grades, rising ninth graders will be assigned four sixty-minute classes between 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM, and we are hopeful that we will be able to have a one-day in-person student orientation at Burnsville High School. Summer childcare will run from Wednesday, June 10th through Friday, August 28th, as Stacy shared, at MW Savage and Sutrail. And as Julie mentioned, we will continue our summer meal distribution. We will have three curbside pickup that are three middle schools, and with a partnership with Open Door, we will have meals transported to six large housing complexes. And Tom mentioned the Summer Pantry 191 will be at four sites each week. Diamond Head Education Center will sponsor a site two weeks each month, and see the link Tom provided for more details. And we are making plans. We are going forward to fall. And so Minnesota Department of Education gave us three options. And so based on guidance and lessons, we are developing three draft plans. One, to return all students to buildings following the most current CDC and MDH guidelines. B, Plan B is return students to school buildings implementing a hybrid model following the most current CDC and MDH guidelines. And a Plan C. So the virus will guide what happens as we move forward to fall. And so Plan C is if no students return to school buildings and implement a distance learning model. We would absolutely incorporate lessons learned from this spring to modify fall's model. And with that, I think we have concluded our report, and now you know why I am a very, very proud superintendent. Thank you, Chair Al, and Board Directors.
Thank you all very much. I'll open it up for Board Member comments. Anybody?
Yeah, you know, this was a very extensive report, and there's a lot of trees in the forest, so to speak, but I think one of the couple of things that really illuminated was, of course, the magnitude of the work that needed to be done and the obstacles you had to overcome. I also think it really highlighted the preparedness of this district. We had the resources and tools in place, not even knowing and imagining that something like this would have happened. And then I am, and of course, the best resource we had in place was the staff, and the flexibility that they have demonstrated is what came through on that whole show for me. Just the excessive amount of the ability to dance to the left when it looked like you had to go to the right. So I really, really appreciate that. And my hat off to you guys. Thank you so much for everything you guys have done. I wouldn't like to say it's been great, but for other reasons, but your performance has been outstanding, so thank you.
Thank you, Director Miller. Director Schatz?
Well, Eric took all my good stuff, but I will, I spent the last, what, thirty minutes, forty minutes now, whatever this, how long this report has been, listening to, time after time, every department, every group, every, everyone saying, here's, we had this unexpected thing. We sort of saw it coming, but didn't know how it was going to affect things, and we did whatever we needed to do to make it happen for our district and for our students and for our families, one after the other, and I'm absolutely blown away. I'm not, I'm not surprised because I know the quality of people that we have in our district, but I am blown away by the effort and time and dedication, I think is probably the right word, that we have, the staff in this district. So whatever Eric said, plus what I just said, and thank you again for all the work that you've, that you've all done.
Thank you, Director Schatz. Director Courier?
Well, my best analogy, I think, is that the 2020 Olympics were not canceled. They were held in Burnsville, Eagan, Savage, and all the performers received a gold medal. This was absolutely amazing, astounding, and really Olympic caliber work that was done by our employees, our students, and the district as a whole. So thank you for the work that was done and our success doing it. And I know it was hard on staff, and I know it was hard on students, but really, it was gold medal work. So thank you.
Any other comments? Director Hume?
I don't know that I have anything to add. I certainly can't beat Director Courier's Olympic analogy, being a huge Olympic fan myself, but it really has been a Herculean effort. And I was thinking during the presentation that, and I've heard others say this as well, no teacher gets into teaching so they can sit behind a computer all day and not be around students. And yet, under this circumstance, that's what they were forced to do for the last three months of the school year. And it wasn't perfect, but they did a phenomenal job. And I know, God forbid it happens again, we'll be even more well-prepared if there's ever anything like this in the future. And the staff did an amazing job. I actually was finding myself a couple of times during the presentation thinking, too bad we can't stop in the middle of the presentation and thank each individual for what their department did, because there were just so many incredible things that had to be done and done well in order for all of this to work. So I echo my colleague's sentiments and just want to say thank you for everything that's been done during this incredibly unexpected and unpredictable time.
Thank you, Director Hume. Yeah, I really have very little to add. Everybody just has made such great points. Dr. Battle, you and our district have moved mountains this, in the last couple of months, and I am in awe. And I just wanted to thank you and for bringing this together because as a district, it's time that we toot our horn a little bit and celebrate our accomplishments and the quality of staff that we have, the awesome families. And so, yes, it's to echo what everyone else has said, it's been a challenge, and we still have much to celebrate, even given the unknowns that we might face down the road. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair Al, and the team. If you can turn on your video, you can come back on while we hear the final. We'd like to see you. Thank you.
We have twenty-one people total. It's our biggest meeting. Thank you, everybody. All right, so now we'll send staff on their way to enjoy the beautiful evening, and we will turn to receiving a report on a proposed adopted FY21 budget with Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. Welcome back, Lisa.
Thank you. Good evening. We will discuss now the adopted budget for 2020, 2021 school year. This is a process that has been in play since the beginning of this last year in fall. And as we discuss this, there is a few things I'd like to kind of cover in this presentation in the overview. Make sure you're seeing it all. There we go. Proposed budget for all funds will be discussed, and the budgets that you see before you are based on Board of Education parameters, and it does incorporate a budget unit breakdown, which is available as well in the board book documents that are shared this evening. I won't go through those in detail, but they are available. We are representing our best estimate of revenues and expenditures at this time, and I do want to make comment on the fact that this is all subject to provisions as is typical for most budgets, but we must have, according to Minnesota statute, an annual adoption of a budget by July 1st. So the plan is that the board would take action on June 18th at our next board meeting related to the adopted budget for next school year. This budget process has been an integrated action plan from the beginning. It involved the passage of the levy referendum, which I want to say again, thank you to our community. In addition, it involved the closure of three schools for, or beginning fiscal year '21. As difficult as it is to close schools, this action has been a critical component of the integrated action plan to allow us in stabilizing the financial reality for ISD-191. Keeping in mind that the reduction in the budget related to this closure of schools is most the operational cost of salaries and benefits of staff to establish another location for operation, not necessarily the utilities of operating the actual building, although that also will be reduced as we move forward. Our school board involvement throughout the budget process is shown on this screen, which involves the board meetings, the workshop dates, and retreat. Additionally, we have the identification of that budget process administratively. It involved many detailed conversations of really digging into exactly what's in our budgets that we began doing in November, once the referendum had passed. And as you can see, the timeline, it runs all the way through March and into, on the next slide, April. During this period of time, the detailed work of having vetted through all of the possibilities with regard to how we might reduce our budget, and then as we got into April and May primarily, it was then all about identifying the detailed work of creating those positions and account codes and building that line item budget, all of which has been culminated tonight in bringing you the proposed budget that you see, identified here on this slide, showing all the funds that are available to ISD-191. And inclusive, and most, most of the attention that we've been dealing with over the last few months has been around the general fund, but there's also quite a bit of work, particularly given everything that you see has occurred with COVID-19, food service and community service, their budgets are very detailed and have been greatly impacted. And so it's important for us to really nail down what is exactly our plan for the coming year. I just want to make note of the fact that this budget that you are viewing tonight and that you would be taking action upon next week does not necessarily assume the operations we've seen in the last few months, rather. It is based on a school year functioning very similar to what we had prior to March 18th, or March 16th. So should take a look at this change in fund balance slide that you see here. The recommendation, if you look at this moment, doesn't necessarily exactly match it, and I will be correcting that for next week. This is what's accurate. So for that error, I apologize, but that is in draft form in your board documents this week, and will be modified to be accurate for next week's recommendation. So taking a look at this, we have our general line item, general fund, the top line, and it summarizes the beginning projected fund balance. Keep in mind that's projected until we complete the audit with the total revenue, total expenditures, and then what would be that projected fund balance at the end. That's done for each of them for various funds. You see a separate fund for food service, a separate one for community service, capital projects continues, and debt service. The trust and custodial is a little bit unique in that this is shifting a little bit according to GASB requirements. And what you'll now find happening is that there's just really essentially for us more name changes than anything, and then the internal service funds that we have for our health and dental, which is both self-insured. I will make comment on the fact that the general fund now, beginning this, this next year, has a budget in it that is inclusive of our student activity funds. So that has shifted things just slightly, but the revenue and expenditure budgets for both of those are equal, and the ending fund balance is neutral as a result of that. As part of our budget creation, we have some determinants that we need to take a look at, right? Some things that are very basic to each budget. The first of which is, is the enrollment projections that you see before you. And so I've given you a little bit of a history with regard to what those enrollment numbers look like or have looked like, and so you can see them listed here. We are assuming a decline of 440 from 1920 to 2021, which is a very conservative approach, as has been discussed with board, and that was the direction provided. As we take a look at the staffing ratios, you will see that they're very similar for the first three years that you see on here, and have slightly shifted then for the 1920 and the 2021 school years. So these are the general fund assumptions that we've made included in this proposed budget. The general fund education formula is at $6,567. This was the 2% increase that had been approved previously, and we anticipate will not be changing at this point in time. There could be a special session that might shift that a bit, but at this point, it's not likely that we will see a change for next year. Our enrollment decrease of 440 students you see listed here, I'm sorry, let me back up a moment. You see the targeted class sizes of elementary for 25.5 to 1 with a range of 20 to 32 students, and our secondary class size targeted at 36 to 39 to 1 with a range based on subject matter. Our enrollment decrease of 440 students is assumed with an OPEB transfer, which is our other post-employment benefits. This transfer is annually done in the audit period, and that transfer is routine. What it does is it approximately sends some funds into the general fund, helping to cover the cost of our insurance premiums, since we are covering folks that are retired. So this comes from our trust fund that is set aside for that purpose. We have assumed an increase in our health insurance premiums and our dental insurance premiums that do affect the general fund, 3.5% increase for health insurance and a 1% increase for dental insurance premiums. On the next slide, we're going to start now looking into what it is that the general fund looks like in a comparative summary. This is a slide that should be very familiar to the public if they've been monitoring how we look at our budgets on a regular basis. We take a look first at the total beginning fund balance, our revenues, we're bringing in, the expenditures, the net difference, and then we break down a little further that fund balance category so that that can be broken down and identified. We focus on the unassigned fund balance, as those are the funds that are available for day-to-day use and needs as the district may require, and essentially is what is available for like cash flow purposes. Keeping in mind that the 8.7 million you see projected for our adopted budget for 2021 reflects less than, less than two perils. So that is something to keep in mind when we're functioning, and particularly if in the future there were to be a cash flow change for us, as has occurred in the past when the state needed funds. That is something we're going to have to keep a close eye on, and we are currently. As had been discussed with the board as to what exactly were our goals in taking into consideration the ending unassigned fund balance, the numbers that you see before you is a 6.86%. Now, our expenditure total has shifted from the conversation we had back in April, but the reality is the percentage of 6.86% is very much, is very close to the number that had been discussed at the time of our board review of our projections. So we feel good about the fact that the variance for the current adopted budget that's being proposed is less than a million-dollar spend down. And so with that in mind, it does result And so with that in mind, it does result in about an 8.7 unassigned fund balance. Moving to the next slide, we have our general fund, still general fund, revenue only, taking a look at that. And as is the case, we break down by percentages as to how much of that revenue is generated by the general state aid formula, which is the largest green section you see of 56%. And then additionally, the state categorical aid, which you see in the purple on the slide. And it reflects 14%. Together, that's 70% of our budget is in the state aid and general state categorical aid. So those two combined are 70% of our revenue budget for the general fund. Property taxes make up about 20%. And the remaining you see is just the federal aid at 3% and other local revenues being 2%. We're shifting gears to the expenditure side of our general fund budget, still general fund. And you see that this pie chart shows you those numbers. We like to focus on how much of this pie chart is made up of instruction and the instructional pupil support. That's the darker blue and the purple. Those two, 64% for instruction and 12% for instructional pupil support make up the total of 76% of our expenditure budget and the general fund is for instructional and its support. Transportation makes up another 7%, which is the next largest number you see on the slide, along with operations and maintenance also being at 7%. Our administrative costs are 4% of the general fund expenditure budget. Still taking a look at our general fund and still expenditures. Want to take a look at it now, the object side of things. This is how exactly are we using our funds? So this is the salaries and wages and benefits we want to focus on. That's the larger portion of the pie that you see there, orange color and the light blue. The salaries and wages are 56% with employee benefits being another 21%. Combine that 77% of our budget for salaries, wages and benefits. The next largest number you see on this slide as to how we're spending our funds is 16% being set aside for the purchase services. Moving away from the general fund and now focusing on our food service fund. You can see here a projected fund balance going into the next school year of 871,000 with a slight spend down of our food service budget of 142,093. With that, we would still end our projected ending fund balance at 729,000, a dollar amount that is fortunate that we have a fund balance in food service as that is something that is particularly needed at this time. As we move on to look at the food service revenue, I want to point out at this point that this particular revenue budget that's being proposed to you does not include a change in prices for next school year. So we are looking to recommend that our price, prices for meals stay the same as they have been for the past year. This budget also assumes operation of a full food service program as experienced prior to mid-March this past year. And that is what is reflected when you take a look at the federal aid being 67% and our state aid 5% and other local revenues being 28%. The next slide is our expenditures for our food service program. Taking a look at how it is that we spend our food service money, you'll see that 52% of that money is spent on salaries and benefits for the food and nutrition staff. 40% is used for product. So here's a fund where it really does take a lot of dollars to be able to produce the meals by just the sheer purchase of product that's also needed. And the remaining percentage of budget that sums total 8% is spent on supplies, capital expenditures and other. Moving next to the community service fund, this slide shows you a summary of the projected beginning fund balance going into the next school year. Our revenues, our expenditures, you see that we're proposing a budget that is essentially break even and ending that fund balance kind of where we start. This is also assuming that food or community service fund, excuse me, would experience the flow of revenue and expenditures and their programming would continue as we have been experiencing prior to mid-March of 2020 as well. Our community service revenue, as you see here for community ed, you will have about 26% is coming from state aid. 28% comes from our taxes and other local revenue is 45%. So that's quite a different shift from either the general fund or food and nutrition as to where the money comes from for community service to be able to perform the programming that they do for our community. So how exactly do we spend the money in community service expenditures? This slide shows you that of the programs that we have in community service expenditures, the largest part of the pie lies in the project kids programming. As it does take people to care for our children. So that's where most of the funds are, and you can see there are other larger chunks of school readiness for 10%. Excuse me, we have general community service programming of 19%. Our ABE, adult and senior is 15% and our preschool ECFE is 11%. Next on this slide is our adopted budget for the capital project fund. This includes the funds that are available yet from our 2015 bond issuance. And we continue to focus on the safety and security needs that we are still experiencing across the district for the use of those funds. The next slide shows you the debt service funds. Here I would like to point out that essentially this is a break even fund where revenues equal the expenditures and that's to cover our principal and interest on debt. However, you will find that there's a slight increase to the fund balance. This is essentially coming from the rent that is received as we rent out half of our Cedar Building leased by 917. That rent due to the fact that we have outstanding bond issuances on that particular building goes directly into the debt fund. Has been for the last nine years as well. This slide talks about our next steps. It's anticipated board adoption for the FY 21 proposed budget is June 18th of 2020. We do anticipate there would be revisions to this budget for many reasons. We normally revise our budget once a year. Next fall, we'll determine whether we need to do an earlier revision as well to address anything that might be an over, you know, kind of overextending impact from COVID-19 or particularly if our enrollment shifts dramatically from what we had projected in this budget. With that, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Lisa. I'll open it up for board questions. Any board member questions or comments? Seeing none. I had just two questions, Lisa. One is, is there any update that you might have on the food services budget since May 8th, since the COVID report on May 8th?
Maybe you could tell me a little bit more of what you're particularly looking for?
Is the situation as we discussed pretty much the same? Has there been a change?
From May 8th?
Dr. Battle? We can't hear you. Unmute.
So on May 8th, I think we were in the midst of COVID and we were a little worried about the situation. Is that what you're referring to, Cheryl? And the update we have now about the CARES funding?
Sure. Okay. All right. So the CARES funding is going to be available largely for purposes of technology as well as the cost for our staff, existing staff to be able to perform the required execution of delivering meals and support services to our students as well as then the childcare that was also required for our healthcare workers and others. So given that, I think that the, it made a great relief when I saw our numbers for ISD 191. It's very helpful. It's looking like it will be somewhere between 1.2 and 1.5 million dollars of CARES funds available for us to apply for. So we will go through that process and identify exactly how it is that those funds will be utilized in our necessities for any expenditures that have been experienced since mid-March all the way through September 30th are eligible under the CARES funding. So we just need to make sure that we have a very cohesive plan as we submit it and make sure that we have got that addressed. My concerns are lightly greatly lessened as far as how the impact is going to carry forward as a result of that. Not to say that there may still not be some additional costs because as we all have come to experience and learn with just working through the, what it means to us to live in this environment, which is now involving COVID-19. There, there are additional costs. There are additional things that we need to consider to maintain that safety and security that we need for all of our students, our families, our visitors to the building. And, and so with that, we'll just need to consider that and how that carries into this next year's budget. I would say at this moment is not necessarily reflected, but up through September 30th, at least we have these funds now to be able to work with.
Thank you.
And I
Go ahead, Dr. Battle.
And I do want to add, and I asked Brian Gersich, today we superintendents receive information from MDE that the US Department of Agriculture has approved Minnesota's waiver to continue the meal service through August. So
Very good, very good.
Upcoming this summer. We were a little concerned about that too. Does that answer your question, Cheryl?
Yes. And then Lisa, I also just wanted, wondered if you could speak a little bit to the the safety and security enhancements that were planned or are planned coming out of the, the capital project fund?
So currently those funds are primarily focused on the camera placement and necessity for some additional cameras across our district as we tickle the things. Additionally, then as we, as we move forward, it's a question of there are some remaining funds related to those that bond issuance and anything we use those funds for needs to be within the parameters of that review and comment. And safety and security lies within that. So I think it's a question of just making sure that we identify very carefully what it is that we're looking at. Some of the things that have been addressed in a few of our buildings, fifth, three different management systems across our buildings. And some of those management systems are more tightly aligned with our fire emergency systems. And so for instance, some of the security is about linking and having the programming of that emergency system automatically close sections of doors throughout our buildings. And so that too has been taken a look at for those areas that that's a possibility.
That's great. Thank you. And just one final comment for folks at home. You had mentioned earlier on in your presentation, there was one slide that listed out all the different meetings and conversations that we had together. And this presentation goes by pretty quickly, but if you haven't been sitting in on those meetings, you might not be aware of all the work that and conversations that the board and you, Lisa and Dr. Battle and your team have been doing ever since December. So it is quite a lengthy and involved process, particularly this year. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, Dr. Battle will be giving us a report about the student board representative responsibilities.
Yes. So tonight I'll present, I must give credit to our former board representative, Yoda Heath. And we were given a charge to work with Yoda Heath, me and Principal Dave Helkey from the high school to share ideals based on board members' desire to have a more robust and comprehensive voice, student voice through the board representative. So Yoda Heath put forward the ideal to have a club. This is connected to the board policy 209, 299, which provides input to the school year, school board through the establishment of the student representative. And the purpose of the ideal and proposal that I bring forward tonight is really to provide some structure and procedures to provide a more inclusive and representative student voice forum. Also, this structure will provide students perspectives about topics of importance to board members and students. And so the structure is to have a club that would have representatives from all of the formal student groups. But we all felt it was very important to not just look at the formal, formal leaders, but to have a process where other student voices could be elevated. The meetings would occur once a month and it would be convened by Principal Helkey as well as our board representative. And we do have our board representative for next year, Miku Mi Adizu. So the meetings would occur once a month. And we also wanted to ensure that we had middle school voices. So the elected, the selected board representative and the substitute based on the topic would also ask that representatives from the middle school leadership groups would all
Teresa, I think you're on mute.
Teresa, you're muted again.
Well, can you refresh where I ended?
You were talking about next year's rep and then suddenly you like mid-sentence you went mute.
So next year's, see if you hit that space bar, that's what did it. I have to remember. Next year's rep, Miku Mi Adizu would work with the substitute for the board rep and we really wanted to make sure we had middle school voices. And so they would duplicate the same process, have leaders, formal and informal student leaders at the two middle schools and they would take notes. And then the board rep would incorporate all of those perspectives into themes into a board report. It was also important from board members that we strengthen the superintendent's role. And so you see in this proposal, more mentorship and collaboration with the high school principal, and then also I would have more interaction with the board representative. And then we also wanted to be a little clearer on the high school principals. And with that, I present the report.
Great. I'll open it up for comments and questions.
I have one question. The one concern I have is the whole transportation of getting the reps to the middle schools or vice versa, the middle school students to the high school for that communication piece. What kind of discussion or is there a resolution or a suggestion on how that's going to be facilitated?
Thank you, Director Courier. And so that is a good question that Principal Helkey and I need to respond to with the help of the new board rep and whoever the substitute will be to make sure that when they do need to go to the middle school. In my past experience, if we have transportation issues, there could be a way where we can use a cab service if they are vetted, or we could use some of our transportation vans. So we would definitely work that out.
Thank you.
Director Schatz.
Thank you. Yes, I'm really excited about this proposal. It's a great step forward in really making our student rep a true voice of the student population in, in the work of the school board and really bringing some depth and substance to that role. And the students that we've had in the past and the reports that they've brought have been wonderful. Really great to hear about what's going on at the high school. And I think this takes this one step further and really engaging our students even further into the work of the district. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Yes, that was it. Thank you. Yes, we're looking forward to seeing what comes next year. Thank you very much, Dr. Battle. Next, we'll stay with, with you still, Dr. Battle, and we will receive superintendent's report.
Yes, excitement. Chair Alt and Board Directors, so thank you. Tonight I want to provide a review of the graduation ceremonies that we held last week. Of course, we were not able to hold this year's events in the same way we have in the past. Instead, each of our four schools held a commencement, Burnsville High School, Burnsville Alternative High School, the BEST Transition Program and ABE Adult Education Program, all planned ceremonies that reflected their students' needs and honored achievements on the individual level. For BEST, this meant students coming to River Ridge and being recognized individually while picking up their diplomas. A video slideshow that also A video slideshow that also includes congratulatory messages from staff is also being sent to students and their families. Students in the Adult Education Program who received their general education diplomas, professional certifications, and even their citizenship. Came to Diamond Head for individual pictures in the last days of May. And a virtual ceremony was streamed on YouTube on June 4th, which now has nearly 400 views. Burnsville Alternative High School staff celebrated their 65 graduates in a number of different ways. They delivered yard signs and caps and gowns to students and took pictures of them the last week of May. Then on June 4th, students came to BOSS to pick up their diplomas, gift bags prepared by staff, and take an official portrait. Later that evening, a virtual ceremony that included student and staff speakers premiered on YouTube. And now has more than 600 views. Burnsville High School graduates had an opportunity to get an official portrait. In Peyton Stadium on the same day when they picked up their cap and gowns. Then on Friday, June 5th, Burnsville High School staff split up into three separate parades and drove nearby each graduate's home to celebrate with them. While still maintaining social distance. I participated in those parades, and it was clear that students and their family members appreciated the show of support. And the opportunity to see their teachers in person. So I really want to thank the staff who made those parade happen, including Wendy Droogie and Matt Doach. So lastly, the Burnsville High School Virtual Graduation Ceremony premiered on YouTube. And cable channel 18 at 6:00 PM on June 5th. The ceremony included student speakers, individual names being read, and musical performances. Which were one of the many items the students identified as most important to them. And the pre-ceremony that showcased photos of the class of 2020 and messages from community members and recent alumni. I really appreciated board members' messages, and I'm, the students did as well. Thank you to Tina Lagard and the rest of the Burnsville Community Television Staff, as well as Jeff Andrews for helping to create the video. And to teacher Teresa Musser for coordinating the event. As of yesterday, the Burnsville High School graduation on YouTube had more than 3,500 views. Nearly 700 watching during the premiere. So this has been a lot to share, but I think this year's graduation ceremonies were certainly not what we envisioned. When the school year started, but I do believe staff made a tremendous effort to provide the celebrations that all of the graduates deserve. And once again, I'm a very proud superintendent. This was my first graduation season, and so I'm very proud of the students and the staff, thank you. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you very much, Dr. Battle. All right, next, we are at Board Member Reports, are there any board member reports? All right, I don't see any. So we will turn to the business portion of our meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Is there any item that board members would like to separate? Seeing none, I will take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Abigail Alt.
I.
Jen Holweger.
I.
Leslie Chester.
I.
Darcy Schatz.
I.
Diddy Carrier.
I.
Scott Hume.
Hi.
Eric Miller.
Hi.
And the motion carries, thank you. New business, we will start with Stephanie White, Director of Student Support Services. We're being asked to approve the Headway contract for 2020, 2021, welcome back, Stephanie.
Thank you, good evening, Chair Alt, Directors of the School Board and Superintendent Battle. Um, I'm presenting tonight the proposed contract for Headway for the 2020, 21 school year. The proposal is a reflection of our reprioritizing in the budget. Identifying or able to identify the funds that would support this contract. And then recognizing the mental health is one of our priorities as we enter into. Meeting the mental health needs of our students and families during the time of COVID. As well as the racist events that have happened as of late. Um, Headway has been a great collaborator for us during the last few weeks and and for the last years. And they have transitioned and made changes. That have made me even more confident in proposing this contract. They have transitioned to telemedicine, which allows our students to continue to. Receive those therapeutic services. And they have also changed in their willingness to share therapists between buildings. And that's always been a barrier for us in the past in providing an equitable system. And as you got to review the contract, I'm hopefully you saw that that has changed in their proposal. And so with that, I I recommend that we continue with a contract with Headway.
Thank you, Stephanie. The recommendation recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the agreement for Mental Health Services with Headway Emotional Health Services, Inc. For 2020, 2021, for a total of $257,000, $257,500. And authorize the Executive Director of Business Services to execute the agreement. I I will take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Schatz, I think I heard from Director Miller on the second.
Yes.
Uh, discussion or questions? All right, I don't hear any, I'll just make one comment. You know, of course, supporting our students. Mental health and helping process through trauma is so very important to to their learning. And we really value this partnership with Headway and being able to add some additional services that might not otherwise be there. So thank you for bringing this forward. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Jen Holweger.
I.
Leslie Chester.
I.
Darcy Schatz.
I.
Diddy Carrier.
I.
Scott Hume.
Hi.
Eric Miller.
Hi.
Abigail Alt.
I. And the motion carries, thank you very much, Stephanie.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next, we'll return to Lisa Ryder. We are being asked to adopt a resolution approving intermediate District 917's Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program Budget. Welcome back, Lisa.
Thank you. Um, so some might ask, what is this about, and why now would we be talking about information that is actually for the 21, 22 school year? Um, it is in July of this summer that we will have deadlines by Minnesota Department of Education. To gather information from every school district in the state of Minnesota of their long-term facility maintenance projects. As members of 917, you are being asked in this particular board action. At this moment to address what it is that they need from our taxpayers as their our proportionate share of their projects that they have for long-term facility maintenance. With that being said, this is for the pay 21 levy is where this would be approved. And that is something that will come before you in September and then in December for final approval, and those levied funds. Uh, are used in the 2021, 2022 school year. So as you can see, there are documents attached to this particular item. That show that 917 plans to spend $27,053 on the 21, 22 school year for long-term facility maintenance. Our proportionate share as a member of that district is $4,212.15. There is a, the forms that are attached, the first one is about their ex, the expenditure application. It requires that they have to lay out 10 years of information as to what they plan to spend and how they would plan to spend that. And then they also show the details of that particular school year for the 21, 22 school year. As to what that $27,053 will be spent on. And lastly, there is a calculation of how it is that they come up with what 191's proportionate share is for levy purposes. So they are asking for this resolution to be adopted by our school board, they're doing that the same with all the other member districts. So that they can meet the deadline of the state that the state has in submitting that in July. So with that. Uh, the board is being asked to adopt the resolution approving intermediate school district number 917's Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program. Budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, I will take a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Director Courier, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Leslie Chester.
I.
Darcy Schatz.
I.
Diddy Carrier.
I.
Scott Hume.
Hi.
Eric Miller.
Hi.
Abigail Alt.
I.
Jen Holweger.
I.
And the motion passes, thank you. Um, staying with Lisa, we are being asked to approve the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Program Application and Budget.
So as you've just heard described, the process for the long-term facility maintenance stands the same for us as well. Uh, but given the fact that we do not have any regularly scheduled meetings in July, we want to make sure we take care of this in June. So it seems appropriate to do it at the same time we're talking about the 917, so what you have before you in the board packet. Is the 10-year plan for our school district. And we show it a little differently than the form that MDE requires. MDE wants to know how are you spending that money, broken down by things like. Mechanical systems versus plumbing versus building envelope, that kind of thing. We also show you a 10-year plan that shows which buildings are having what projects that might include. Maybe a couple of those different categories, right? So there's, we're showing it to you in two different ways, the total dollars should match for every single year. And we are showing you the 20. Um, I believe that the first, um, first year shown in the 10-year plan is the the current school year. Um, and then the 21, 22 is the second year of that plan, and it goes out from there for the 10-year program. Our numbers are, we try to keep them very similar from year to year so that the impact to our taxpayers is fairly stable. And so you see that being the case, the health and safety is a part of our long-term facility maintenance program. And so we have a very regular and stable program that is defined for for that purpose as well. And so that's included in our program as as you have before you, the recommendation. That the Board of Education approves the long-term facility maintenance budget, program budget for the fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, Lisa. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Schatz, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please call call the roll?
Darcy Schatz.
I.
Diddy Carrier.
I.
Scott Hume.
Hi.
Eric Miller.
Hi.
Abigail Alt.
I.
Jen Holweger.
I.
Leslie Chester.
I.
And the motion carries, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And with that, I will declare us adjourned, we are going to a workshop. In which we will be reviewing proposed board SMART goals, discussing FY21 superintendent goals. And then also reviewing the superintendent board communication document. I think we're good to go, do we need a minute?
You can absolutely just get started right away.
Okay, great, thank you, Erin. We will start with Darcy, with, Darcy's been working with Dr. Battle and staff. On SMART goals, and we'll let you present the proposed SMART goals. Unmute, Darcy.
Sorry, uh, okay, so did it, okay, so. Do you want me to share my screen, Abigail? I can do that here. I don't know if I have the ability to share my screen, so I think everybody has. Oh, wait, maybe I do. Oh, there we go. Okay, I think everybody can already see those. Okay, I see nodding heads, okay, that's good. So we, uh, in the workshop that we had. Couple of months ago, we came up with several goals for the board as a whole to work on. And those are the the items in not bold here in regular text and the. So Abigail asked me to take those and turn them into actionable goals or SMART goals. SMART, of course, standing for. Yeah, I can't remember where they are, Eric, whatever, so specific, oh yeah, specific, measurable, attainable. I don't know, realistic and timely or have a time, time sensitive, something like that. So just that you make, you take the kind of the general idea and you make a specific action and specific goal out of it, so. The first goal that we had here was onboarding, and actually, so we had goal, we had three goals. Under goal one, we had onboarding, but we actually had three different goals under that. And then, so I turned that into three separate goals. Creating this information for prospective board members, the SMART goal, you'll see here. Um, and we actually already did this, so these are, these are the best goals ever to have the ones that you've already accomplished, so this is, this is one of those. And then the. Actions associated with this, the board approving the document, which we've done. And then there's a few actions here that. That we will leave with Teresa to and her team to to handle these other pieces. Here of the Communications Department reviewing branding and then having it posted at the appropriate time and locations. The second goal that we had for onboarding was for candidates leading up to Election Day. Having some sort of. Some sort of event where the candidates who had actually filed, so the previous one is for for people who thought they might file. This number two is for candidates who'd actually filed, so this would take place. Between the filing. Between the end of the filing deadline and an election day. For the candidates to be able to come in. Perhaps meet some staff, superintendent, and get kind of again, a little more or semi-orientation or pre-orientation about the board. The board role, perhaps a little more in-depth than just the document that we created would provide. Teresa's feedback was that she would prefer to have this. To handle this, we had previously, the previous. Years, and as part of this, we thought perhaps that meeting with staff as well, and and Teresa said that she would. Be happy to take on this. This option as well, and then we would also. Have a panel of. Three board members who are not up for reelection. And this would be an optional item, an optional opportunity for candidates that don't have to do it. It's just a, so they can get a little more information, just a little more Q and A, a little more information. So the SMART goal is here before August 1st, 2020. Create and then and document an internal process for providing that. That session. The actions to be the superintendent and the board to determine the topics to cover, the amount of time, et cetera. And the additional action to document the process, so this is an internal process, an internal document. And the additional doc, action to document the process, so this is an internal process, an internal document as opposed to a public document of some kind. So um, Abigail, as we do these, do you want to actually? How did you envision the, like, that, the actions of these taking place, like, so we're not gonna. Do you want to assign some of these actions tonight? Do you wanna, I'm assuming you don't want to cover these. Do these actions tonight, actually, right?
No, no.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. So we'll, so at some, some point. Um, okay, so then we'll have to, as our deadline is before August first, if this, if this document is adopted tonight. Then by the board, we'll have to um, have some action, some volunteers, some. Um, assignments to be able to accomplish some of this then, um, to meet our deadlines, if this is what we're gonna go with. Okay, so the third um, action. Um, the third goal is for post-election day, and again, a lot of. This is already done since we did this in the last round, um, with our last three brand new board members. Um, the mentoring. And mentoring conversations as well as support, um, and information from additional places such as M S B A um, training. So Abigail, I think the difference with this goal as opposed to the last process was that you did all the mentoring, right? And this goal now has um, uh, existing board members mentoring new board members as well, right? Okay, so again, that here's the smart goal. Uh, before the fifteenth, again, we're trying to get all this in place before the end of the filing deadline, so we have this in place for the fall. Um, knowing that we um, will have at least one and perhaps more new board members coming in during that time, so. Um, the action then, what activities will be included documenting the process? Um, assembling the documentary, additional documentation. Uh, determining if this will be an internal document or a packet, and then just review and prove the document or packet, so. Um, just, that'll just be part of the process for putting this together. Okay, so they actually, so that was all goal one. This is goal two, was to um, kind of the public relations, you know, we talked about how board members could operate as ambassadors. For uh, the district. Um, and here, the goal, like, just kind of generally stated was for Scott Leslie to work on clarifying our message and our role. Determining measurable indicators, advise the chair. The smart goal here is, you'll see, is um, to work with the communications director to clarify and specify the board's role. And supporting efforts. Again, the actions, just determining what those will be documenting and then discussing in the board retreat for approval. A third goal was to uh, connect our board work to the one ninety one strategic plan. Officers' meetings. Will identify agenda item, for each agenda, I, agenda item, identify the goal and how it aligns. And once again, the perfect kind of goal, one that has already been completed, so these are the best kind, so. Cause I, um, that's correct, right, Eric and Abigail, that this is already being done.
It, yes, and actually, this was supposed to be our first meeting with the um, strategic directions included in the agenda. Uh, but there was kind of a, you know, who's on first kind of thing as far as where it was gonna be, so we will see that in, in next week's meeting.
Excellent, well, then, it's, so it has been discussed and that seems good enough for the, um, for the goal itself to be accomplished, so. Um, so, okay, so I'll take, um, so time for questions, discussions, things like that on this document and what people. Think the, the smart goals and actions reflect um, our. Purpose and intentions when we made these goals during the workshop.
And if people raise their hands through Zoom, I can call on them, Darcy, I don't know, can you see who's raising their hands? On your screen?
I'm all minimized here.
If you click on participants, you should be able to see anybody who has their hand raised.
Yeah, well, since I'm sharing the screen, it's a little bit different here. Oh, there I can see it, yep, got it.
Yeah, okay, so you, you got this, Darcy.
Yep. I get it. Okay. Nobody's got any comments? Awesome.
Oh, I do, actually. I haven't raised my hand yet.
All right, well, go ahead and just talk now, since you're already talking.
I have my hand up also, but I'll let Abby, I'll go first.
Oh, go ahead, Scott, you go first.
Oh, there, okay.
Okay. See, I raised my hand, Darcy, and then you didn't even notice.
Well, I flew right by it, sorry.
That's all right. Um, no, I think these goals do indeed reflect what we discussed previously, thank you for your work on it. Um, my one question, it might be a little self-serving, but just clarifying the process for the goal where I'm, where Leslie and I are. Specifically mentioned. Is the expectation that Leslie and I would initiate tho, that meeting, or will Erin and Dr. Battle be initiating that meeting?
So I, this year, this was the goals that we had recorded and your names were on them, and so.
I agree.
Yeah, and so. I think you're it, so, no, but that's the. Um, but that's, you know, so that was my question, Abigail, earlier was, we're not going to, we're not gonna. If you guys want to volunteer to do them, great, have the bandwidth to do them, that's great, but it's not part of tonight's. Um, I guess, um, actions, discussions, things like that to really be too um. Too caught up in who's gonna do what as well, just can, we'll just.
Well, I was specifically asking about the ambassador one that Leslie and I are already assigned to work on.
Well, there you go, so.
And if.
Scott, I would say, I would say, yeah, you should initiate.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Leslie's saying, yes, Scott, you should initiate that, so.
All right.
Um, so my, my question was just on um. The, under onboarding, the smart.
Yeah. Okay.
Um. Since we're trying not to have meetings in July.
Yep.
Perhaps if we change August first to August eleventh, cause that's our first meeting date.
Okay.
If you're okay with that.
Okay, any objection to procrastinating on this one a little bit further? I don't see any objection to that from anybody. Okay, I don't like that change. All right, any other questions, comments, additions, changes? Good to go, okay. All right, uh, then that's all that I have, Abigail.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and I guess the only question. I'm just looking at like who. I know I have some documentation that Jamie pulled together for us on the candidate filing.
Right.
Eric and I are gonna review together, so that'll get um, number two accomplished. Number three is pretty much accomplished, we just have to review what we've got, Jamie's gonna pull things together in a single location. For us to look at and make sure that we've got what we need.
Yeah, I mean, some of that is, I mean, part of the process though for number uh. Um, yeah, for number two is gonna be, you know, we either just duplicate, you know, we, we modify what was done in the past so that, cause that included um, staff. Communications, um, as well as superintendent, and so, um, but essentially, I think that, that one. Um, is ready to go, but you know, for, I guess for all of these, I guess we really want to. Uh, make sure that we have the documentation actually put together, written down. The chair has it, superintendent has it, um, you know, for anything that the staff would be involved in, and. That's, just so, any future boards don't have to reinvent the wheel, they have something to modify and update. If they do so, so while these are, we have good frameworks for all of these. Um, done except for the second goal, which is really kind of a new one that Scott's gonna just go ahead and take care of. Um, for us that um, we just, I, um, we really want to be. Clear about the documentation and um, really having it down clearly on paper, so there is no who's on first issues with that. So.
So I will work with Teresa and Eric. On making sure we have, so by that first meeting in August. Uh, make sure we have a repository, an electronic repository for us to go into and review and give it a thumbs up.
Great.
That sound good?
Yep. Excellent. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
All right, uh, next, let's see. Uh, superintendent goals, F Y twenty one superintendent goals, um, so Teresa and Eric and I uh, got together and talked about this. And um, I do need to call out that Eric had to leave, he had a family emergency. Um, so uh, wishing he and his family well. Um, and the thinking with uh, tonight's discussion is really. Uh, to, you know, we had talked about creating superintendent goals that stem from our strategic plan. Now we know that Teresa, um, Teresa already has a goal to look at the, the current strategic plan and possibly. And, you know, tweak it a little bit. But we're just for now, we're gonna stick with what we have in terms of developing her goals because that is what we have today. Um, and I wanted to open it up for discussion as far as, you know, were there any areas in the strategic plan? And Teresa, feel free to chime in at any point. Where we would um, based on our conversation during the evaluation. And on last year's work and what we might expect this year, what guidance might we give Teresa in as she develops? Her goals for next year, and then next week's meeting, we will review the draft of her goals and provide input.
We also discussed looking forward to the work ahead of us, for example, the launch of the pre K twelve pathways. So uh, keeping that in mind as well as the development.
Yep. And I think that's, um, that would be something that would fall under one of the strategic directions, right? But, but, you know, again, not making it too. We want it to feel comfortable and make sense for the work that we know you're gonna be doing. Does that make sense to everybody for what we're, what we're planning tonight? Yeah. So I'll open it up for conversation. Looking at our strategic directions, um, or vision twenty twenty. What thoughts do you have in terms of the, the larger buckets that, that we want to talk with, with Teresa about?
Well, it, it's a little bit of a tricky discussion sort of too, because uh, certainly one of my, one of my. Visions of that was, you know, that, the time in the schools developing, you know, that kind of. Like real um, thorough understanding of the culture of each school and, and things like that, especially as we're, we're. Reimagining, you know, some of what that will have, not only from a curriculum standpoint, but also from a personnel. And a, um, a student standpoint. But, so, in the best of all worlds where the pandemic is gone by August fifteenth. And the world is entirely back to normal, um, and we start school on time and in the schools as normal, then. Um, that time in the schools. Um, really getting to know the staff, the students, the culture and, and internalizing a lot of that. Um, that would be, that would be one for me.
And I would add to that, um, you know, I, I know that there are opportunities to check in with. Um, you know, the principal, the leader, the principal leadership group. Um, sometimes, you know, certainly not making it a regular meeting for you, but certainly that's another opportunity. Um, and I have no visibility to whether this is something you're already doing or not, but just throwing it out there that. In terms of tagging on to what Darcy was talking about with getting to know the schools and the culture and the people, that principal group is important too. Um. Anyone else?
So I'll add a piece of, during the smart goals, there were a few pieces, so I'd like to align especially with the ambassador. Um, and then the process for the candidate, so with the ambassadors with branding and marketing. So when the branding and marketing report, uh, Wes and Aaron shared, highlighted, there was four, there were the quadrants. The four, and he highlighted the new pieces. Um, I think definitely to have a goal tied to your smart goal with some of those new pieces. So I just wanted to make that connection also.
Yeah, that's a good one. So do people want to take some time to think about this? And um. Certainly not too much, cause Teresa, you, you said you wanted to kind of be able to bring the draft forward next Thursday, right? Yeah, so, what, when would you want to have our input?
So let me share a couple of ideas I looked at considering the upcoming work, so in the M S B A um, elements, the standards. There's a section on curriculum instruction, and so I'm thinking about that for the pre K twelve pathways. And then um, the culture of the school, there's a diverse community and cultural. Aspect that I think will align with the previous two comments. And so maybe take a look at those M S B A, um, and so. Yeah, it's a week, June eighteenth, we have the next board meeting, so.
So uh, if you could share that with us. Um, that document with us. And um, any input that we have. Adie, you have your hand up, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, I just relatively put it up, I'm a, I'm a believer in less is more. So I think, you know, two strong goals that she's personally going to focus on. And then we have our, our strategic plan that the, the organization is going to work on, including us. Um. To me, that makes more sense than seven or eight goals. That spreads Teresa too thin, i- if that makes sense. Um. But it, that's just my personal kind of look at it. But that pathways, that's clearly. What we're unfolding next year, and a strong goal around that. Um. It would give me confidence. So that's my little spin on it.
And Leslie, I saw your head shaking, nodding in, in vehement agreement.
Yeah, I agree with Dee Dee, um, two small, um, two, two smart goals, because I mean, a lot of the work is gonna be centered around the, the strategic plan goals. Anyway, but to have targeted goals for Teresa to focus on, I think, and, you know, sometimes less is more, so.
And I think the two. Go ahead, Scott.
I'm just gonna say, I agree completely for all the reasons they've already said, yeah. I've been, I've seen too many times in my day job where too many goals lead to none of them being accomplished. So I'd rather her focus on a smaller number of goals, and we can all feel that she was successful in accomplishing those goals. And to have play goals, and why didn't you get all your goals done? So, the fewer the better, I think.
Good. So Teresa, you've already identified two. And what I'm hearing is that that's probably in the right ballpark. Where we want to land. Um, curriculum and instruction with the pre K twelve pathways, and then, I'm sorry, the second one was diverse community.
So um, for the M S B A, there was a, there's a diverse community, it's A D and A E. And cultural competency, and so I think you have to be culturally competent by getting to know. The people in the schools and the. the people in the schools and the staff. And so I think I could address the previous comments with that. And then related to the SMART goals that were just reviewed, I really think another big piece is the branding and marketing. And so the ambassadors working with Scott and Leslie really honing in on that slide, which shows the new pieces.
Yeah. Okay.
Right.
I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think especially, you know, I like not having looked at the details beneath AD and AE diverse community. I think that is a perfect place for us to be working this next year. Especially given recent events and recent racist events, I think it's a good place. So Teresa, you and I, I guess, can maybe we we planted review next week. And then have the draft of goals, the draft of your goals for Thursday for general board review in our workshop.
So we'll put a placeholder.
Yes.
Because tomorrow's Friday and Tuesday. And so yes, we'll work on it next week.
Okay. And then is your preference to would you prefer to review them next week and then approve them in our first meeting back in August? Or do you want to just have them come forward next week and based on what we've talked about tonight?
So was that for me or for the board?
That was for you. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting. Excuse me. So we've done it before when we've had the report and then the approval, correct, in one board meeting?
Yep. We can do that.
So I'm buying either way, or we could wait till August. I'm buying either way.
Board members, your preference, Scott?
I think if we review it next week and are fine with it, there's no reason not to approve. But if we review it and have lots of concerns, then we can kick it back.
Okay.
So let's go into it, assuming that we'll approve and see how conversation goes, I guess.
Agreed.
All right. Sounds like a plan. All right. So then next we have reviewing the superintendent board communication documents. And this is basically stemming from our contract with Teresa. And I appreciated back then, and I still do now, the fact that Teresa asked that we create this document because I really, I believe it's been really helpful in just having our communications practices synthesized in a in a single document. What we have here is the it reflects the work that Teresa and Eric and I have done, just to update it a little bit. If you're looking at the electronic document, I think the changes are still in blue font. I printed it.
They are. Yeah.
So the changes are under board chair bullet number two. Because the language in the previous document was out, the verbiage was out of alignment with the practice. Basically, it's our communications are something that that the chair and the soup work together on and make sure that everybody's informed as opposed to having either one of us completely responsible. The second one was under superintendent kind of tweaking. We probably probably will never have to worry about this. In, you know, in recent days, when when safety and emergency was it was a concern, just wanting to get the communication practices down so that we're all very clear regardless of whether it's the superintendent or a designee or chair or vice chair. How the communication should flow. And oh, yeah, that's the next one. That's the first one is the designee and then under emergency crisis communication. That's where the the clarif, the additional clarity is is added. And I think that was it. So I'll open it up one minute to check in with all of you since this is something that's connected to Teresa's contract to get your thoughts and any additional suggestions you might have.
I I don't have any changes. This looks looks great. You know, clarity is always very helpful to everyone. And this has pretty clear channels of communication. Who does what, when and for what reason? And so I don't have any, I don't have any changes to it. I think it's going to be very helpful.
I agree.
I have a question. Technically, what is this? Is it an amendment to our contract or is it just a guideline? Or I mean, technically, what is it?
So in the contract, we have specified, we all agreed to have a communications protocol document.
Got it.
That's this. It's not part of the contract. It's the result of the contract.
Yeah. Good. I mean, I'm glad, I mean, a very good idea. And it's, yes.
Yes. Good.
Anyone else?
I thought everything looked fine. I like the new changes. So I thought I don't have anything else.
Okay. And just to note for future. This is something that we want to review, not necessarily edit every year, but certainly bring it back every every year, just to check in with it and make sure that it it still matches our needs. And I thought that bringing it forward during the evaluation time kind of made sense.
Well, and what a year to test it out in this year. I mean, poor Teresa, I mean, what a year. So good idea, Abigail, to bring it back at this time after this year.
Well, thank you for that. I'd say poor communications team, Aaron and his team.
I don't know how we made it. I mean, as a school district. And we were one of the lucky ones. I'm going to do a little bird walk here. The fact that our kids had devices. When you listen, I still can't believe that what we did in 2015 to pass that levy to give our kids those devices has certainly given our kids an advantage. So now I'm done bird walking.
Well, and and also Dee Dee, the, you know, in addition to the devices, I mean, remember all the the digital curriculum reports that we received.
Yes.
All mapped out, you know, kindergarten through 12th grade.
Yes.
It's coding, right?
Yes. Yes.
All right.
So they've been there for preparing for the last five years.
Yeah.
Communications department's going to be so bored when pandemic is gone.
I doubt that.
All right. Well, if nobody has anything else. Thank you, everybody. Really great work, great conversations, and have a wonderful weekend.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.